Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular council meeting for the City of Utica Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Legions. Councilman Backus, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Terencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Backus.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here. We do have a quorum. Councilman Deion called and said he was running a little bit late tonight, but he does expect to be here shortly after, very shortly, so he will be here. Tonight, we do have a pretty full schedule. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:05. That does give us some time to do public comments. I will have to stop, though, at 7:05, and will continue after the public hearing. For public comments, if you're here for the CDBG funds, you can speak to that during the public hearing, but if anyone has any comments for council other than the CDBG funds, feel free to step up the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Does anyone have any comments? Public comments?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do. I'm sorry that that started at 7:05.
That's okay.
I'd like to speak, if that's all right?
Absolutely. Just give us your name and address.
Okay. My name is Liz Curry. This is my husband, Mark. We're the owners of the Locker Room Saloon, 7790 Auburn Road.
Can you make sure that mic's, it looks like it's tilted down?
Appreciate it. Thank you. We're good now?
Yep.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Do I need to repeat that, or?
Probably. Sure.
Okay. My name's Liz Curry. This is my husband, Mark. We're the owners of the Locker Room Saloon, 7790 Auburn Road. I'd like to start off by saying that we are strongly opposed to the social district proposal, and we have a few reasons why. The locker room is the only business in downtown Utica that stays open past midnights. We have concern about intoxicated individuals flocking to our establishment after the social district closes. Denial of entry due to overconsumption of alcohol typically results in aggressive behavior towards our security. We have a strict policy of denying entry to anyone seen drinking alcohol before entry, which keeps our staff and our guests safe. Serving alcohol responsibly is our number-one priority. We are unsure of where the liability lies if someone were to become overly intoxicated and injure themselves or others. If to-go cups with business logos will be the only acceptable drinks in the social district, what is stopping consumers from bringing in beverages from home and putting them in our cups? Who is responsible for making sure these drinks are not handed to minors after they leave, and how can we be certain that this will not happen? Also, we'd like to know if city funds are available for additional officers and DPW workers to maintain the social district. Now, these points may sound self-serving. We are proud to own a business here and would like all businesses in Utica to thrive. Unfortunately, we do not believe this is the way to accomplish this goal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Can I have a time check? I don't know what the actual time. We have a public hearing.
I'll find it.
Then it'll be 7:05.
Yeah, take your time. I've got a minute to kill. Cycle through one more time, and we should be good. All right.
Thank you.
We will open public comments up again after the public hearing, since there might be some people in the audience that would like the opportunity to speak. And I'm just gonna wait until it hits 7:05. All right, 7:05. I'd be looking for a motion to enter public hearing.
移到
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Terencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We are now in a public hearing. This purpose of this is to discuss items or items for the community development block grants. Is there, I'm guessing there are folks in the audience tonight. If you would step up to the podium and give us your name and your organization.
Good evening. My name is Krista Carpenter. I'm here representing Hearts for Homes. Hearts for Homes is a small nonprofit helping homeless children and their working families get into sustainable, affordable housing in Macomb County. Most of our assistance is security deposits. We also do eviction assistance in some communities, and most of our families are coming from shelter situations, living in their cars, or, as we call it, couch surfing with family and friends. So, we also assist in home goods, coffee pots, silverware, dishes, beds, couches, whatever we can get from the community, we pick it up and try to store it, and then when our families get into a safe, secure situation, then we find help, people to help us move it, and we try to move as much in as we can to make them whole. Last year, in 2024, we helped three families in Utica, two with security deposit and one with eviction assistance. This is our first year asking for CDBG assistance. We have already one family who has applied in Utica this year, in 2025, and so we would like to reach out and ask you for your assistance, your consideration. If you have any questions, I'm kind of short and sweet at this point. I just try to get it down and get out of your way.
Anyone in council have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. My name's Marion Schultz. I'm on the board at the Samaritan House. It's been a very busy year for us. Over the past several months, we've seen a 30% increase in requests for help. With the rising costs of just about everything, it deeply impacts our low-income clients. Because of the generosity of our community, we are able to continue to meet their needs. This mission takes shape in our work of fighting hunger and building bridges to stability for at-risk families. We have been serving our community since 1995. We are asking that you grant our request to disperse $500 in community development block grant funds to Samaritan House. We will steward these funds and continue our work of serving your constituents who are at risk of hunger, eviction, and utility shut-offs. For last year, from 1/1/24 through 31/24, we provided food assistance to 11 families, spending $3,968 for the City of Utica, provided five families with a Thanksgiving food box and five families with an Easter food box, along with a $25 gift card to purchase the meat of their choice. Our kids' summer food program supplied four families with $50 gift cards for the months of June, July, and August while children are home from school. Our backpack program supplied a backpack and supplies to three children. Four children benefited from our coat and boot program, receiving new coats and boots, and we also helped six families with Christmas gifts and gift cards. So, we would be very grateful if you would consider us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did anyone from council have any questions for Marion? Thank you. Next?
Good evening. My name is Sherry Warnock, and I'm a volunteer coordinator at Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers, or IVC. The number of older adults in Macomb County is expected to increase by more than 90% by 2040. This group of seniors needs extra support services due to changes that come with aging, chronic health conditions, or disabilities. At the same time, family structures are changing, often leaving seniors with nobody nearby to help. For over 30 years, our nonprofit has been providing free, basic assistance to hundreds of frail, older, and physically challenged adults, helping them remain safely in their homes with the help of hundreds of volunteers. This assistance helps with transportation, chores, respite breaks, errands, and reducing loneliness. These opportunities provide fulfilling experiences for those who wish to volunteer, as well as the help for those in need. The CDBG Safe at Home Project of IVC is part of our larger chore and repair program, and this project was developed to provide additional chores and repairs in communities that allocate funding for that purpose. Safe at Home allows us to assist low-to-moderate-income seniors and physically-challenged adults with indoor and outdoor chores, minor home repairs, and routine housekeeping. We identify the individuals who cannot do these things for themselves and have limited resources, and prioritize those with the greatest need. We are requesting CDBG funds to increase the number of low-income citizens we can reach to grow our program, as well as to coordinate the volunteers who do these services. IVC provides almost 20,000 hours of help over all of its services to nearly 500 people in need each year. In Utica, where more than a quarter of your residents are over 60 years old, we have used all CDBG funding awarded by you right here in your community. We hope for funding for the 25-26 program year so we can continue to build momentum. We regularly get phone calls and notes of thanks for the things that our volunteers do. One volunteer who went out to fix a running toilet noticed that the screen door was sticking, and he fixed that while he was there. Another volunteer stepped in and did some housework and chores for a woman who was unexpectedly hospitalized. So, our volunteers go above and beyond. As long as they're in the house already, they keep finding things that they can do to help. So, other projects, or other examples in this project would be replacing locks, washing windows, raking leaves, routine housekeeping, installing smoke alarms, all those kinds of things to keep people safe. The Safe at Home Project can continue to grow with additional funding, and we can help more lower-income Utica citizens. Thank you to the city council for your consideration, and any dollar amount granted is greatly appreciated in our program. If anyone knows of anyone who could use some help, please send them our way. Our phone number is 586-757-5551, and if you know anyone who has time to volunteer, we definitely need the volunteers to do the work. Do you have any questions I can answer? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from any of the charitable organizations? Library director, Ms. Francis, is also on the list.
Hi. Good evening. I know you guys have a letter for me in your packet. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I will just touch on a couple of the things that we use the CDBG funds for every single year. We have been expanding our Vox children audiobook collection, along with our adult audiobooks are still so very largely popular, along with our large print material. These resources are essential for patrons with physical decline and children with learning challenges. Vox books, they cost about $50 per book. They are highly popular but need frequent replacement due to wear. This grant will help replenish and grow our collection, ensuring continued access for those who need it most. The Utica Library is requesting $1,000, and we hope, and thank you for considering our request.
Any questions from council? Last call. Is there anyone else? I know we have a few listed on our agenda item summary that are, have not spoken yet. I don't know if they're present. Last call. I'd be looking for a motion to exit public hearing.
移到
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Terencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. We're back in regular council meeting. At this time, I'm gonna reopen the floor for public comments. Anyone that has any comments for any item on the agenda, feel free to step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to address council. All right. Next on the agenda is consent business. I'd be looking for a motion to approve all items in consent.
移到
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Next on the agenda, implementing social district downtown Utica. Would you like to step up to the podium?
Hi. I'm Anna. I'm one of the owners of Inovives Wine Bar.
And I'm Paul Weiss, owner of Steampunk Taproom, 7722 Auburn.
We were here previously at the last city council meeting. We are proposing implementing a social district downtown Utica. We just believe that it will make the city more vibrant, more successful, more popular. Good for everybody.
One of the things mentioned, I'm sorry, Paul.
Would you mind if I address a couple of things?
Absolutely.
So, it is very heavy burden, serving alcohol and taking care of the community, ensuring that we don't have over-intoxication issues. Absolutely respect you guys and understand that, you know, because we deal with the same thing. Obviously, we've got a little different business model. The idea of the social district, though, is really just to make it a nice community where you can get a wine, you can get a mixed drink, you have it in the cup, you can stroll down to the park, you can watch music in the park, you can enjoy the outdoors and the community. It's not to get people completely intoxicated and have drunk people up and down the streets. Yes, there are concerns, like you said, about could someone refill their alcohol from their car? Who's gonna ensure that they don't hand it to a minor? These are legitimate concerns. However, this isn't a problem that hasn't been solved by many communities in our area. Mount Clemens has a social district, St. Clair Shores has a social district, Royal Oak has a social district. I don't know the answers to those specific questions, but I do know that they've been addressed by those communities, and that we can leverage those answers from them. And I have really nothing further to say other than Steampunk is obviously fully in support of having a social district.
And, you know, social district, not social district, these issues that you just mentioned, they would exist regardless. Like, who knows what's in this Starbucks coffee mug anyway, you know? Like, I don't know. Maybe somebody already poured some beer into their car. So, like, this is there anyway.
I know we had a, unrelated to social districts, we had the downtown Utica Business Group, kind of the kickoff meeting, and there were a couple business owners, two of the bar, one of the bar owners that was there and one of our other businesses downtown. They had a pretty negative impression of doing the social districts. One of the comments, I think that came up at that, was that we should call some of the other cities that are doing social districts. The city office did call St. Clair Shores, and the information we got was that the businesses involved in the social district formed an impromptu association, and in that association, they are funding security, cleanup, and rental fees to St. Clair Shores for, I think, setting up a stage or maybe renting the stage. I don't know if signage was, I think, yeah, I think they're paying for the signage as well. I'm not 100% sure about the signage, though. We also found out that they do it every other Saturday from 5:00 to midnight, and just in the summer months. I know in your original request, you wanted 12:00 to midnight Fridays and Saturdays year-round. I've gotta be honest, my major concern is the cost to the residents. I'm guessing we would have to hire two police Friday and Saturday evening. That would be a pretty large lift for our taxpayers. Additionally, we don't have DPW on the weekends. We'd have to hire overtime DPW, I'm guessing, to do cleanup. I would hate to see solo cups with your bar logo on it, you know, flowing around in the city on Saturday and Sunday mornings. So, I think there's some holes that we haven't quite figured out. You know, how do we pay for this? How do we make sure it's secure? How do we make sure it's clean? The other item was the, St. Clair Shores has programming for every one of their events. We still don't have, at least I don't have, a clear idea what that programming would Understandably, we haven't completely determined what nights that would be and how long, but just to open the doors and let people roam around with open containers, to me, doesn't seem like enough. You know, I think there needs to be defined programming, whether that's music, you know, cornhole tournaments, art exhibits, dance exhibitions, whatever that might be. But without programming, I just don't see it as a success. So, that's kind of my input, where I'm at right now. Does anybody else from council?
I also got together with the mayor pro tem of St. Clair Shores, Dave Verbino. He started that program. Shores in alone pays for the bands for the whole summer. The other people pay for that. They have, because they can close off their street. They close it off from Nine Mile out south to, I don't know what you call the bypass that goes around that area. They don't even have police presence, but they have two full-time DPW employees, one at each end, really just keeping people in. It's very safe. It's Saturday nights, 12 times a year, okay? It's a whole different atmosphere, a whole different setup than we have here. How are we going to keep people in on the two ends? They have it very easy, because they can shut it down, and they don't affect the traffic on map. They go around with that cut-around. Because of that, they also have vendors that bring in little booths, and they sell product. They help pay and contribute. It costs the people of St. Clair Shores not one penny in tax dollars. Everything is paid for. DPW, when they do need police presence, that's accounted for. It's cleaned up. It is, unfortunately, you're existing in a different space. The idea, and you were very adamant, you wanted it the whole year? Uh-uh, okay? Why would somebody, when it's 20 degrees out, wanna leave your place, walk around in the streets with a beer? I wanna nestle up and stay in one place and be comfortable. They've been doing this for years. They know what works and doesn't. I just, there's way too much left open in the proposal here. So, that's how I feel.
I agree. I think that it's a good idea. I'm totally not opposed to it. However, I feel like you've just said, oh, let's have a social district. You know, there's been no plan. When you start your business, you have a plan, and you know where the money's gonna come, you know what you're gonna do, and I'm just mirroring what they're saying. You need a plan to make this work, whether the plan is the cornhole, whether the plan is one event a month, but you have to have something to keep the people, or, first of all, to get the people. And if we don't have a plan in place, like Ken said, you know, are they just gonna walk up and down Auburn Road with a glass of beer?
Couldn't agree more. I could not agree more.
So, I believe that you're in the very, very beginning stages of this, but there's so much more work that has to be done before we can even think about implementing it.
Absolutely.
You know, and I don't know how long that will take, you know? And part of your plan has to be, how are we gonna pay for DPW and police? You know, we can't just expect the taxpayers to pay for this, because a lot of our residents aren't gonna be here, because you're looking to get business from people from outside to come and see how beautiful our city is.
Right.
So, I think that you're in the beginning, 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 the thinking stages, you know? Just kind of came out and like, yeah, this is a good idea. And it's not a bad idea, but I don't think this is the right time, and I don't think you have the proper plan to make it work.
Councilman Deion?
I had a couple ideas that kind of stewed in my mind since the last time we met on this topic. Mr. Mayor and I had a conversation that we envisioned at one point or another, our alleyway that is just north of Auburn, parallel Auburn, that turned that into a venue of like a walking dabble-type place, where you could close that off, because literally, if we were able to make an arrangement with the businesses along there, we could actually, instead of having foot traffic up and down Auburn, we could have an area where there could be little vendors running out back in the alley, and you could take your drinks perhaps from there through the crosswalk into the alley space. We talked about this as a hypothetical, improve that spot, make it a little more of like a green spot, make it something where you could hang some streetlights, or streetlights across the alley, make it kind of like a little, what's that little place down off Library Detroit, right? Make it kind of entertaining. The Belt. The Belt. So, there's different ideas here that we haven't tapped on yet, so there's other things that we can do. I feel like the idea of bringing like a small festival atmosphere every couple weeks in downtown Utica throughout the summer, or even however long economically it worked for everyone to be involved to do it, I think would be brilliant, and make it a little destination on the weekends, people would want to come here. But I think that we're still in the step of asking, what do we need to get out of this, and how do we get there? I think one thing, instead of looking at DPW employees or police employees, if it's not, if a police, if a police presence isn't required, say things work out just the way we think it is, right, and maybe how they're doing in St. Clair Shores, maybe we find volunteers, you know, from local, some of them need volunteer hours, and they can stay on the corners, and they can do trash. Hey, a high school kid that needs 20 hours of community hours before he graduates could police up the area. You know, these are all possibilities that we haven't talked about yet, but if we need police resources, someone's gonna have to pay for those. If we need DPW to move barricades or something, someone's gonna have to pay for that, too. We can't put the expense on the city to do these things for private enterprise to gain money. Now, if it's a win for the community, the city will flex that muscle and do that if everyone wins. That's what we do, you know? But if there's any chance that we can make something where we have volunteers involved, or we have something that maybe changes the footprint a little bit, and make it so that we're not shutting down the streets, but I think this is a great idea. I think it's got legs. I just don't think it's ready to run.
And for the record, four bars or restaurants are in favor of doing it, and two bars and restaurants are not.
Anyone on the north side of Auburn? Not a fan?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're a longtime Utica business, and we have to listen to their opinion as well.
Last week, or last month, the two bar owners that spoke really were quite adamant about the city needs to make the investment. They need to come up with the money, okay? You were one of them, and the gentleman from host, okay? Not you, Paul, but Anna was. And that isn't our responsibility. You have thrown this out, and it's like, okay, now, Utica, proper city, you pick up the pieces and make this work. This is really onto you. That you also have to contend with, we already have during the summertime between the ballpark, where are people gonna park? Where are they gonna go? Again, we don't have a confined space from point A to point B. No offense to Tom, you can't have a kid from high school policing people, okay? I really wouldn't want a volunteer policing people unless they have a gun and a badge, because who's gonna take the responsibility, okay?
Have we spoken to? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Have we spoken to other cities or just St. Clair Shore? Do we only have one opinion?
Right now, just St. Clair Shore.
That's the one I've researched, okay?
Okay.
Even Mount Clemens has a different downtown setup, so they can contain it. We can't.
And Mount Clemens has plenty of streets also where they can kind of close down and make it. That's about where people can congregate, and there's other ways to get around the downtown district. Us, we have Auburn and Cass, and to push traffic up Brownell, it's a one-way that we've already discovered that that's, you know, we can't push traffic that way. So, our limited footprint and limited accessibility around downtown, which obviously, Hollow Road's right there, but some people would kind of get lost, because what do you do? You can block it off of the bridge, stop people from coming down to Auburn. It really is a, it's a hard shutdown, almost any time we do something, because there's people that need to get into the city, that can't quite get past the bridge, because anyways, it's not easy to shut down logistically. So, but there's something here. There's, I think there's a possibility to do it. I think we just gotta really.
You don't have to shut down anything.
Well, there's, I was, I was adding, I'm sorry. I was kind of adding on to Mr. Sakura's concept of when they do things in St. Clair Shores had been there to their events, and they have a really nice band running out there that would close down the area between, I can't remember that street either, just south of Nine Mile, between Nine and just south of there. But anyways, they do a really nice job, but it's a small festival atmosphere, and they get a lot of people that come there, really enjoy that little downtown district they kind of, you know, created, so it's actually nice.
But they do have, every one of the weekends, they have a band playing?
Yeah, we can take advantage of that, too. We do Saturday nights, you know, or Friday nights, whatever the case is, we can figure this out. I think we just really need to have more of a footprint hold on this.
I just believe there's so much more work that has to be done.
I agree.
To even honestly put it to a vote.
Chief Kaluzny, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor and Council. One of the things from the police that we're looking at, and I did reach out to a deputy chief that is in a community that runs a social district, is the control of the area and stuff. So like from your business, from a liquor license perspective, you're responsible. Somebody cannot walk outside your business with an open bottle, correct?
Correct.
That's for, you have to ensure, right, you have to ensure, yeah, if it's sealed, you can take it out, but they can't take just an open glass, walk out the doorway. That's your responsibility. When we open up the social district, now we have a barrier where they can't, you know, they can walk within, but they can't walk outside of that barrier. The responsibility of ensuring that compliance now falls onto the police department.
Right.
So that's where the additional services, because we got to make sure that as people are within the social district, they stay within the social district, that they don't step out.
That they don't sort minors.
You can't just put signs out and say, you know, no drinks past this point. It's the same as putting a 45 mile an hour speed limit sign on Hall Road and expecting everybody to drive 45 miles an hour down Hall Road. So it's one of the concerns. Another issue they had, and I appreciate Liz from the locker room bringing this up.
I'm sorry, Chief. You said you spoke with them. Did they say how they dealt with that?
Yeah, they contract, they have two police officers that control that area.
Okay.
So they have police services that are there that ensure.
And do you say what, whose expense that was?
The expense comes from the social district, funding the contract.
Thank you for checking that out.
Yep. And one thing that Liz from locker room pointed out is they have an issue with people within the social district that are over intoxicated trying to enter businesses and stuff. And the businesses, and I will say, I know how Liz runs at the locker room, they're very good at keeping drunks out, but that is one of the things, minor assaults and then over intoxicated people trying to re-enter businesses and stuff.
I'm not sure if it was put in that day, but the social district would be having certain hours of preparation. So after 11 o'clock, let's say, or midnight, it's done. So non-intoxicated people after that, well, nobody can walk around with all their drinks.
Nobody gets drunk before...
I can see the issue would be that the people are still on in the bottle and stuff.
Superintendent Diamond, do you have any comments?
Same thing about cleanup. Obviously, we're worried about that. If that's something that they look into. For overtime, I mean, I would at least see two people coming in to having to clean that. We would have to get better garbage cans down there unless that's something that the social district is, you know, or the business group, whatever, will be doing. So there is a lot of additive that I should say unknown yet for that, but it definitely would be something that would involve us. If it's on a Saturday, that means Sunday, that's double time. That's not just overtime.
And there's an hour, isn't there a minimum hours that they...
Three, yep, that's three hours.
Three hours is the minimum. So two guys for a minimum of three hours each.
Correct. So anything that goes up to three hours is the call and would be for. If it's after that, then it's hours worked. So if they get in there and they clean up for an hour, it's still three hours of overtime. If it's four and a half hours, then it's four and a half hours, so.
Mr. Mayor, would you think it'd be beneficial to create a committee, maybe, maybe a member or two of council, the business owners, maybe have Mr. Diamond or the chief maybe be able to sit on occasion and give some guidance to create this, where there could be some law aspects to it that make sense so that when the creative part, it meets the law part, they can kind of meld this together? Because I mean, what makes sense in your mind doesn't always make sense legally here in the city. Would it be beneficial to have a committee created and formed in this case?
My philosophy all along has been, we wanted the business owners to develop the plan and kind of come to us and then tweak it based on Chief Kaluzny, Superintendent Diamond, you know, what the needs of the city are. I mean, if they're up for it, that's fine, but I think to Councilwoman Terrence's opinion, I think we need a more structured plan, you know? And I know you guys presented nights, obviously, how many nights you wanted. That's, I don't think that's going to work for the city. Every Friday, every Saturday, noon to midnight, year round. We haven't voted on it, but I'm guess, you know, I wouldn't support that. I think we still have some tweaking to do, but I don't know. Chief, what do you think? Is a committee something that's, could be worthwhile to get, help them get closer?
I definitely think that they do need a much more structured plan and really send, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to sitting down and, you know, going over some ideas and trying to, you know, work on our concerns and how we can work together. So I'm not opposed to that at all.
I think one of the major things that we've talked about is not burdening the rest of the taxpayers with the cost. So based on, okay, tentatively, you know, Superintendent Diamond could say, okay, I've got to call in people, if it's Friday night, Saturday, and I don't think you need two nights, but if it's going to be, okay, we got to call them out Saturday morning and then we have to call them out Sunday morning, you put and say, when you look at time and a half and double time, this is my cost. If you talk to the chief and say, look, we have to put an officer on both ends, okay, and I really think you do, because you cannot ask volunteers to do any policing, not in today's age of people getting mad and either shooting you, stabbing you, beating the hell out of you. You can't do it. That's what their job and that's what they're paid for. So if tentatively, even before that all starts, okay, this is what the city thinks it's going to cost, if the, if that money can't be raised, it doesn't fly. It can't be a burden to the rest of the city. So that's my opinion.
Anna, I did talk to a bar owner in Lake Orion and Royal Oak, where they both have social cities. And their point is they always had somewhere to go. So Lake Orion, or Royal Oak has the ice rink right outside this gentleman's bar. So they'd grab a drink, go watch your kids skate. In Lake Orion, they had the cornhole league that went on all summer and that happened to be right outside of another bar. So there's always an attraction to go to. So I agree with Councilwoman Terrence, if there's not somewhere to go to, it's not ready yet. So and then at that point, I don't know why you'd want someone to leave your bar. You've got a captive audience spending money at your bar. And now you're asking them to leave without really anywhere to go. So I think it's a great idea and I would volunteer time with a little committee because I think it could work, but it needs a lot of work.
Any other comments from council? So I think we'd be looking for a motion to either approve or deny the request to start the social district.
I'll make a motion to deny the request at this point.
Motion by Sikora.
Support.
Support by Terrence. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
No.
Deanne?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your time, Councilman.
Next on the agenda is the amendment of the donation bin ordinance. Amanda, do you want to give us an update on, I know I went to the planning meeting, but you're probably much more qualified here.
Yes. So this has been a bit lengthier process than we originally anticipated, but we did bring it back to Planning Commission and I summarized your comments and feedback from the last city council meeting. And we did make a few small changes. Lori, I believe this was sent out to them. So the text that's highlighted in yellow and red are additions or revisions from what was presented to you at the last meeting. Originally, in the intro section 2108, we had that donation bins are permitted in C1, C2, MXD, and I. And then, if you recall, at the very end of the ordinance, we had an exclusions category where we were allowing donation bins in residentially zoned districts if they were owned and operated by a religious or a nonprofit organization. So Linda and I talked a little bit and we felt that that was, the language was potentially a violation of First Amendment rights, freedom of speech. So what we came up with was adding in, into the beginning section, that donation bins are permitted on the following districts only if the parcel on which the donation bin is located is one acre or larger. And so they would be allowed in R1 through R3 and O1 if the parcel is larger than one acre. And doing some research through the community, that would basically cover your schools and your church parcels and would prevent donation bins from being put on a, like a small residential lot, basically. So that was kind of our compromise because if we weren't going to allow them in residential at all, you would have to remove them from St. Lawrence, Trinity Lutheran, your Flickinger Elementary School properties, things like that. So tried to kind of make the best of both worlds with that. Then if you scroll down to section E, item seven, I believe, we did add in a line here. Councilman O'Donnell brought up at the last meeting, the sort of library book containers that you see throughout the city where people can donate used books and, you know, pick them up, exchange them. And so if this ordinance was passed as it was, those would be prohibited. So we did add in a line that says, "A single container with a base dimension of five square feet or less and a height of five feet or less shall be considered exempt from this ordinance." This was subject to some long discussion at Planning Commission. We think that it will cover it and it's roughly the size of like a mail, like a UPS drop box or a mailbox. And if we find that, some planning commissioners had concerns that like multiple would be dropped off or they would just start showing up everywhere. But we did write in the single container, so that's one container per parcel. And if this becomes an issue, we can obviously revisit this as well. But we did want to add something then that would allow those types of collection bins for books primarily to be considered exempt. And then finally, under penalty, we just revised the language as Linda suggested, that the city shall have the right to remove the container at the expense of the property owner pursuant to a fee resolution passed by the city for any costs and fees occurred from material, storage, and labor. And any condition caused or permitted to exist in violation of the provisions of this ordinance shall be deemed a new and separate offense for each day that such condition continues to exist. So that penalty language will be subject to the fee structure, fee resolution that you pass as well, which will have the applicant fee in it and the violation fees and things like that. So those were the three changes that were made since we presented it at the last meeting. Linda has looked at it, the building inspector has looked at it, and as I said, Planning Commission has recommended it. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or concerns.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, can you try to remind, pardon me, can you remind me the problem we're trying to solve for? Because it says, you know, due to many donation bins being set up around the city without property owners' permission. I mean, is it legal right now to just set up, did somebody plop a donation bin on my front lawn?
Technically, no ordinance exists within the city. So is it illegal? Is it not? There's nothing really to permit it or prohibit it as it's currently written. And so according to Jerry, the building inspector, these are just being dropped off. There's no labeling on them. We don't know who owns them. We don't know what the purpose of them is. There's nobody to contact when they're not being maintained properly. So this was sort of the solution to that. And if we find them within the city and the property owner doesn't know who's dropping them off, this gives the city the right to remove them from the property, basically. And we do have to allow them for nonprofits because that was also a court case recently where communities have been sued for banning them outright. So it's kind of the long and short of it. I don't know, Mayor, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, there was a Fox Two, I think it was Fox Two News report of a company that was creating these bogus donation bins and dropping them off like at Target parking lot. No, they didn't get permission. They just put them there. And all that clothes or whatever, I think it was clothing, everything that was collected, you know, via donations was being sold. It wasn't really going to a charitable organization. And when, and it wasn't Utica, it was some other municipality. I don't remember which one it was. But they didn't have the enforcement power either. Like, they don't have, you know, real phone numbers on the bins. That's why there's something in here about, has to be marked with a phone number, you know, and all that kind of stuff. So trying to get those bins removed became a nightmare for the municipality. And it was a scam. It was just a big scam. So that's really kind of the origin. I think Jerry, our building inspector, actually found some instances of that over in the Planet Fitness parking area.
Yeah.
Where they were just dropping these bins, never got permission from the property owner. The, when Jerry tried to call the numbers, they were bogus phone numbers. So it was, we believe, a scam, just like what showed up on Fox Two.
So those are still there because they can't be removed?
No, we got rid of those. Yeah, those are not there.
Those are removed.
This kind of started, this whole thing evolved because somebody from, was it the Humane Society, I believe?
I believe so, yes.
The Humane Society came into the office and wanted to do it the right way. And we quickly realized, well, we don't have an ordinance to even monitor this, you know, to even give you permission to do it the right way. You know, he had the property owner's permission to put the donation bin there. It's obviously a legitimate 501(c)(3), properly marked. He was very cooperative and patient, you know, like, I want you guys to protect me as a 501(c)(3), you know, from these other scammers. He didn't want to be grouped into the other scammers. So he's really the one who kind of initiated this whole project. Does that answer your question?
I, somewhat, but I mean, it sounds like the bins are, those, the Planet Fitness bins are gone.
Yeah, I believe they're all gone now.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
I still think this covers us from a legal standpoint, writing it in, that we have the, the city has the authority to remove them if they're in violation of the ordinance that is now written and passed, so.
Any other questions? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to amend City of Utica zoning ordinance, Article 21, administration and enforcement by adding Section 2108 to permit and regulate donation bins in non-residential zoning districts.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we need to determine what our fee schedule would be for the penalties mentioned in, have to go back to that.
Well, we need to draft a fee resolution, so I would suggest that they'll come up with the actual fees. I can draft a resolution when that happens.
Okay.
And then that would be approved at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll postpone that second motion. Very good. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is allocation of fiscal year 2025 CDBG funds. We've heard from all the organizations tonight that are requesting a portion of those funds. Mayor Pro Tem, did you work up the math for that?
What I would suggest or propose is that the library get $1,000 off the top. We had Hearts for Homes, Samaritan House, and Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers individually, personally asked for the funds with great explanation. I would say the 1490 would be divided by the three, so you're coming in at 497, just a little under $497, a little over, 497.33. Maybe give the library 1,001 cents. That makes the mathing. So I would make a motion to do that.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrence. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you to all the organizations tonight. We know you do great work. Unfortunately, we're limited. You know, we don't control how much we get in those community development block grant funds, but we're happy to help you in the little way that we're able to. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Nights of Columbus Mentally Impaired Drive, April 4 through 6. If you could just give us your name and your address, please.
Sure. Mike Dixon, representing St. Lawrence Council 2950. I live in Shelby Township at 46313 Gwen Point Drive. Is that good? Okay. Nights of Columbus is seeking approval from the councils for soliciting funds on the five approved corners in the city of Utica to support the annual Nights of Columbus Mentally Impaired MI Drive as it's known. It'll be conducted on the weekend of April 5th and 6th throughout the city. And the funds will be used to support multiple organizations in the community that help the mentally impaired and physically impaired in the community and around our area of St. Lawrence.
And you've been given the ordinance, you're aware of the corners and all that?
Yep. Yeah, I had to Google them to figure out where they were all at. Yes, thank you.
Any questions?
No. No, they do this every year, so.
Yeah, it's 20-plus years of doing the event.
Any questions?
No. No, they do this every year, so.
Yeah, it's 20-plus years of doing the event.
And the ordinance does allow two consecutive days, I believe, right? All right, then we would be looking for a motion to approve this gentleman's request.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzie, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzie?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Neighbors United, roadway solicitation, May 24th through 25th.
House Counselor-
Name and address, please.
My name is Joe Warren. I'm the president of Neighbors United. My address is 46839 Fox Run, McComb Township.
Thank you, sir.
Neighbors United helps Michigan firefighters with the Walk for the Red. We walk across the state of Michigan every year, collecting funds for Michigan firefighters that are battling cancer. Over the last six years, we've raised over $900,000, and we try to give every firefighting family $5,000 to help with their, their bills, last-minute trips, or anything else they may need where they're suffering. We walk right through downtown Utica. It's usually the Thursday after Labor Day, early morning. Our first official stop is actually at Jimmy John's Field, where they are nice enough to open up and let us use their restrooms. We are asking for permission to solicit on the 24th and 25th of May at all five locations if possible, and we will follow all rules and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the gentleman?
You, you are the individual that actually walks in turnout gear.
That is correct, yes.
I mean, we've seen it, you're, you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
You're like local hero status. You're, you're fantastic.
Thank you. I try, I try not to take that because I, without my team like Rob and everybody else, you know, it's, it's really nothing because they're the ones that keep us walking. And, you know, your citizens and businesses that come out and shake our hands really, really keep us, keep us motivated. And your Utica pleases are, are phenomenal, so.
When are you, what month do you do it? I know it's-
We do it in September, September 4th.
So it's warm. So you're full turnout gear. Now, I don't know if you guys know this, but he's, he's got on boots, fire boots. They're not comfortable, they're not made for comfort, they're made for-
We're tennis shoes now.
You were just-
The first year, the first year was boots, I'll never do that again.
Plus, they cost too much, or tennis shoes are cheaper.
The theory of care is the worst.
Full turnout gear, you don't wear a pack, though?
Uh, we, we share a pack now. But I did wear it the first time myself, yes.
Got 40 pounds of gear on him heading out to, you know, these long marches, and September can be 85 degrees sometimes, so.
Last year was pretty hot. First day, I wiped out. We, we have a big crowd that comes with us. Now, last year, we had 26 individuals that came with us. A couple of them had lost their husband and wanted to walk in, in their honor. We had a couple Shelby Township firefighters with us because one of their gentlemen had contracted cancer last year. So we want to do this right. We don't want to cause any more trouble like we have in the past here, so that's why we're here.
Well, great, great work. Other people have good intentions, but you're doing good deeds. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions from council?
No, thank you.
If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the request.
Mr. Ralph, approve this request as requested.
Motion by Deion?
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Ralph, I need to, I will make a motion to approve his request. I want to approve his request. I, I moved to approve his request.
I thought that's what I heard.
I misspoke.
Do we need to redo this?
Nope.
Motion by Deion, support by O'Donnell.
Correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzie?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
If any of you Utica firefighters, God forbid, get sick, please contact us.
We have a no-let tape policy, auto approval. We also help families that have terminal illness, house fires, or deaths. They're eligible for $250 as long as that end has proof. It's an automatic approval. We send a check out within a week, so.
What department are you with, Greg?
I'm with McComb Township.
When you see Stewie in Dumas, give him grief. You got it.
It's amazing.
And Pizzoli, too.
Next on the agenda is a water bill forgiveness request. Ms. Charlene Matthews, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Charlene Matthews, 7021 Greeley Street. We, we had an issue with our water heater, and unfortunately, I was on the road. I drive for department officers for the American Legion. So I was out of, out of town at the time. I came back to a flooded basement, and the water bill is extremely high because all of the water that is used the last couple months has been supposedly dumped into the sewer. However, that is not the case because we don't have sewer drainage in our basement. We only have the sump pump that drains directly into the storm drain. The inspector did come out and look at that. When we built the house, that is the way they made us put the drainage system in there, right into the storm drain through the sump pump. There are no drains in the basement whatsoever. So when all the water was wasted out, it went right into the storm drain, not the sewer. So I have no problem paying for the extra water, had to replace the water bill. The inspector has been out and inspected it, but my, my problem with it, I'm, I'm on a pension, so this would wipe out one of my whole veteran checks to pay my bills with. And I, I don't have a problem paying for the water that got wasted, but for it to go in the sewer versus storm drain, it's like twice as much the money. So I would request that they look at the cost of what water was used those, from like January till now, and see if we can't reduce this bill.
Reduce the water or just, what are, what exactly are you asking for?
Okay, well, just the sl- I, I just paid a bill that was almost 500 bucks for water. And they were supposed to look at it after the inspector came out to, we showed them, I showed them that it was going into the sump hole, pump area, and it goes straight to the storm drain. He agreed with that, and it was never looked at. I just paid over, almost a $500 bill last month, and then-
That bill includes water and sewer. So what are you asking for tonight? Forgiveness of just sewer, is that correct?
Okay, normally, my bill's between 16 and 80 dollars.
What are you asking for tonight, ma'am? Forgiveness of water and sewer or just sewer?
Just the sewer cost of it. Because I have no doubt the water heater went, it's, you know, it, stuff happens. And I, I know the water went through the water heater and flooded the basement, so, but it did not drain to the sewer.
Superintendent Diamond, have we verified that?
Mayor and Council, we did. We had, one of the DPW crew members went out to, to make sure where it led to, and the work order is in, in your packet, that Mike Francis went out and he, he confirmed that it did go to the storm drain, not to a sewer drain. And a, a read was made, and they did get a permit to fix their water heater, so everything lines up. And we did do a read, our reads just recently, and they're back down, back to their normal usage. So the repair was fixed with, with their water heater.
Along with sewer charges, there is a, a ready-to-serve fee. I guessing she's not asking for forgiveness from that. Just the consumption portion of the sewer, correct?
I, I'm not, I'm confused because there's two on here. I know, I know we have to use the toilet and whatever else, it goes to the sewer. So I don't know what portion of that actually goes, but for us to have used 43,000 gallons of water and it dumped into the sewer, it's just not proper. And then it was even more than that from the month before. Like, like I said, my bill is usually between 16 and 80.
And your usage rates are zero for many, many months here.
Correct, because we have two meters. We have inside and outside meter. So right now, the outside meter is shut off.
Area maintenance meter?
The area-
The area maintenance meter is shut off.
So why are we seeing zero consumption on your in-house, your regular meter?
No, it's showing area maintenance meter is zero usage. It's showing the inside meter was 43,000 units.
No, it's showing-
Or 43,000 units.
It's showing your regular meter is zero for the majority of the months. I see the 43 showing up, and I see a couple ins, I see one for, forgive us, but our copy's a little bit illegible.
That's not what I have here.
I see one month of, looks like 124, 2,025 of 17 units. And then there's one unit a few months later, and another one unit.
So Mayor, if I may, the, the 17 is right around where she, she stated that she had the hot water heater issue, and they were not home. So that would be, they're, before that, they had like one use. It seems like they're not home quite a bit, but the, they have one unit of water is what they normally use. Couple months where they're not home at all, they're just paying for the, the service fees, you know, the ready-to-serve fees. But the, the timeline where she stated her hot water tank went, started was, you know, the end of the January, and then, and part of the, and then the whole month of the February. So that's why you're looking at those 60 units. So, I mean, the normal is one for that. So from my understanding, the phone calls that we've had with, with the city clerk and deputy city clerk is that she's looking for relief just for sewer only. The ready-to-serve fee is something she has to pay.
Correct.
And then it, the, the amount would be for her sewage of how much water came in, you would expect it, or, you know, her normal water usage would be, that normal sewage usage would still be paid for. So she's roughly, I mean, it looks like just one, one unit is what she uses.
Do we have a dollar amount on what that sewage is?
Um, just on this one bill, it's $507.83, and that's not the sewer ready to serve, that's $23.53.
That's for all water coming in the house, though.
No.
No, that's for-
That was 909, no, 82665 without a late fee for that one bill. Now, does this all come on bill? Does this all come under just one bill, or is it?
There was two months.
There was two months.
Two months of-
It started in January.
And she already paid one month full price?
Yeah, I paid full price plus the inspections for the inspectors to come out and inspect it.
Well, when she's saying the inspectors that come, I mean, she's talking, her hot water heater is inspections. DPW is just a work order that, that went out, so.
So did she pay 383, I'm sorry, 34842 for one month?
She paid $393.42, which was the bill that was due February 20th. It shows as a payment on the history sheet that Mayor and Council have.
Okay.
And then she made another payment of $60 at the end of February as well.
Yeah, because that's what I have set up on budget, is 60 bucks. That automatically gets paid.
Okay, I'm sorry. She, you, she was actually charged $200 the first month, $200.77, and then $507 for sewer the next month.
Correct.
So she has a total of $708.60 of sewer fees.
Correct.
Sewer usage fees, yes.
What should she have, a typical draw?
It's usually right around one or two units, and just this bill alone, it's 43.
We need to know what the actual sewer amount would be for each month. It's typical, given her normal usage, right?
Well, that's in your-
But this went down through the storm drain there.
No, but she's still using her toilet. She's still using-
Right, like, that's your own.
What's your normal sewer fee? So-
It's not, it's not usually a lot, because like, I'm on the road. I drive for a department officer, so I'm not home a lot. And unfortunately, it happened while I was in Illinois, I come back to a flood.
You, you said you had a pension?
Yeah, I have a veterans pension, I'm disabled pension.
You're a veteran?
Yes.
What is he saying?
How long did you serve?
Four and a half years.
I'm sorry that you end up as a disabled veteran. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Now I serve all the other veterans as a service officer, trying to get their benefits. So I'm on the road a lot.
Mayor, the deputy clerk went to get the cost for, per unit of sewer charge so that we could figure out what one or two units would have been of regular usage for that.
We can make a motion without having to have that, we can just specify how many units.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for that time period that we waive only the sewer charge. The ready-to-serve charges, the other portions, all of those cross-connection fee of a dollar, all those are the responsibility of the homeowner, and that we, I don't know, one and a half units, two units of sewer fee per month on that. Whatever that amount is, that can be done administratively, whether it's $7, 15. We don't have to wait for it.
You'd say whether it's one and a half or two.
Let's go two units.
Two units.
So we're not forgiving two units, we're forgiving everything in excess of two units of sewer usage only.
Yes, per month. Support. I will support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzie. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzie?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
You can make arrangements with the city clerk. She'll give you an adjusted bill and what, if you have a balance, I'm guessing there's still balance.
We can get that, we'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, you want me to just come in tomorrow to take care of it?
We'll call you, whatever.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for very much being reasonable. Because people want us-
I try.
...to waive the, the water and everything. You understood, that's your responsibility, so.
I try, thank you so much.
And it was proven you didn't have the rest, so thank you very much. I'm sorry for the flood.
Yeah. It's only the third time it's happened, but-
Oh, geez.
It makes it easier to like sort through stuff to get rid of it, so.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next on the agenda is Utica Palooza, Walk for Memories in Vendor Market. If you could give us your name and organization, please.
You got it. Mo Leets, 8 North Plaza Boulevard, out of Rochester Hills. I am the founder of Sparkle Network, and this is a joint venture, this is our fourth year with Women's Life Chapter 9/11. We are looking for approval to hold the Utica Palooza Walk in Vendor Market at Grant Park on June 14th of this year. We would also like to put signs up on Sunday, June 7th, at the usual four corners and in front of City Hall, and at both entrances to Grant Park. So our event is, just a reminder, it's the work that Sparkle does with Alzheimer's and dementia families. That's why we do the walk for all ages and families to get together and be able to do and be able to do stuff. Um, Women's Life, they raise money the same day for their senior, um, Christmas project, so that's how we work together for this every year, so. Um, I'd like to ask for a motion to be approved for Sparkle Network, the Utica Palooza to be held, and also for the, um, signs to be put up the week before, please.
In the vendor market, is that Grant Park?
Grant Park as well, yes.
I thought it was really good at, uh, across the street.
We did too, but it, it got too dispersed, and they weren't seeing both, they were going to one and not the other, so keeping them together that we learned the first year, I think it was, yeah, it was the first year, um, worked the best, so we're going back to that.
What time will the vendors be there?
Um, nine AM, so when the walk starts, they can be there from nine AM to one PM too, yes.
Nine to one?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we would be looking for a motion to approve Sparkle Network? Mayor, oh, sorry, if I may, um, uh, this was you added at, um, A-line?
Last year, yes, thank you again.
Uh, last year, we, uh, set up the, uh, fencing and everything, are you gonna be required anything like that from DPW?
No, we're good, thank you so much, so.
All right, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yes.
Chief Kaluzny, any concerns?
No, we don't have any concerns, sir.
All right, we'd be looking for a motion to approve Sparkle Network and Women's Life Chapter 911 to hold Utica Palooza at Grant Park on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I will make that, well, support.
Motion by O'Donnell?
Yep, support by.
Support by Torenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
And we have a second motion to approve placement of event signs on all corners of Hall Road and Van Dyke, Van Dyke and Han, in front of City Hall and both entrances to Grant Park on June seventh, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Torenzi, any discussion from council?
I just wanna know how big are the signs?
They're eighteen by twenty-four, we might go a little bit bigger this year, just cause it was hard for people, I mean, we try to make it as bright as we can, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not, they're, they're nothing.
They're still in.
They're not huge.
Within our.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mo, look forward to it. Uh, next on the agenda is Department Reports, uh, I would just like to mention to everyone that the Lucky Leprechaun Race is this Saturday, uh, there will be road closures, Auburn Road, uh, and a portion of CAS up to Summers, um, will be closed, I believe the roads are closing at seven thirty AM until the end of the event. Uh, we're gonna have the opportunity to scout out our, in case anybody's not aware, we got a grant for two hundred thousand dollars from the state for mobile vehicle barricades, and the two companies that are in the running, uh, to provide under that grant are gonna actually set up in the city, so we'll get to see firsthand and in action how these mobile vehicle barricades operate, so I'm anxious to see that, maybe just as much as the Lucky Leprechaun Race. Um, so be aware, roads will close, uh, Brownell is also gonna close, uh, completely for, during the race, CAS this year will remain open, uh, unlike in years past where we closed CAS for the Leprechaun Race, we, they're not doing the race along CAS this year. Um, so that, again, it all starts, the race itself starts at ten thirty AM, it's usually a fun time, everybody's dressed up in green with their, you know, uh, pot of gold costumes and their little four-leaf clover headgear, um, I'll be wearing my green hat that I pull out of the closet once a year, every year, uh, so if you're, you're free, it's always a fun event, uh, look forward to it.
And Utica Road is also closed on one side.
Yes, that, that, those road closures will be, you know, just as they have been in the past. Um, I also have two, uh, things to ask of council tonight, uh, with the resignation of, uh, Ron Robinson, as he departed to be our state rep in Lansing, it opened up a position on the Police and Fire Pension Board, uh, I would be looking for a motion to appoint Councilman Lou Backus to the Police and Fire Pension Board.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Deanne, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries, congratulations, Lou.
Congratulations.
Did we get a copy of this for the city?
I already did.
Okay, then I can just hand that to you?
Thank you.
It's an important board to sit on, so, uh, we're honored and happy that you're gonna be doing that for us, thank you. Uh, next for me is, uh, every year, we have a Memorial Day Ceremony down at Memorial Park, um, this year, I'd be looking to have it on Sunday, May twenty-fifth, at two PM. Uh, the event includes the Marine Corps League Detachment One Fifty-four Honor Guard, uh, they do a gun salute, they play taps, and we'll be laying a wreath at the War Memorial. Uh, we also have a guest speaker this year, uh, and, uh, we will be inviting all attendees to join all of us at the American Legion Post Three Fifty-One, following the ceremony for refreshments, uh, from Buschamis Pizza, who they are generous enough to donate, uh, for that day, so I would be looking for a motion to authorize the Memorial Day Ceremony at Memorial Park on Sunday, May twenty-fifth, at two PM.
So moved.
Motion by Deanne?
Support.
Support by Torenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries, thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Uh, does anyone else on council have anything to report this month?
You know, I, um, I just wanna say that I went to the, the business owners' first meeting, that they're trying to form a little coalition, I guess, I don't know, and it was very interesting, I was really surprised and happy to see this, this room was packed with business owners, that they were like, coming out of the wall, I'm like, oh, I didn't know we had that, I didn't know we had that, so I hope that it's successful, and I think it's a great thing, so, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Oh, and Police Chief Ayden came in to, to fix that, yeah.
The TV for me.
The TV for us, right.
Yeah, it was, uh, for our first kickoff, it was very successful, like you said, the room was packed, uh, they've decided to meet quarterly now.
Yep.
Uh, I think the next meeting's the first week of June at some point, they're gonna, they're gonna meet at host.
At host.
This next time, uh, but there was a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm about downtown, uh, really great conversations, so I'm looking forward to see what that group does.
Me too.
Any other reports?
Good luck today.
Ms. Amanda, anything from planning that, oh, she's, she already left.
No.
Nothing additional from planning.
Take this and go.
Mr. Glasgow, did you have anything you wanna report from plan?
I have.
Uh, no report from building tonight, uh, Ms. Francis, library report, we need the mic, though.
Um, I don't really have anything to report, I just wanted to say thank you, um, for the CDBG funds, uh, we really, 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 really appreciate it every single year, so it goes to a really good cause, um, and, uh, it was even suggested that any of the materials that are bought with those funds to start book plating, um, you know, bought with CDBG funds granted to the city, so, yeah, so I think that we'll probably start doing that as well, just so that anybody who checks out our stuff knows exactly where it was purchased from, so.
Thank you very much.
But yeah, thank you again.
I saw on Facebook, and I haven't shared it yet, you have a St. Patrick's Day event, you wanna mention that, uh, something about the Leprechaun, uh, made a tour of the library and the kids.
So Sarah is doing a, um, there's, there's a few, um, St. Patrick's Day themed stuff, but, um, the one that I think you're referring to is definitely the, uh, it's like a scavenger hunt.
Scavenger.
Um, and they get their own little pot of gold at the end of it, so, um, so yeah, and then there's just some, uh, crafts that are like, take-home stuff that we do once a month anyways, but yeah, that scavenger hunt one is probably the one that you saw that's probably getting a lot more buzz, yeah, so.
I'm guessing I'm too old to participate in sounded fun.
You know, we, we gear it towards children, but we don't turn anyone away, so, fun for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Chief Will Seg.
I have nothing to report, but just a reminder to everybody, it was our wonderful daylight savings time to change your batteries, your smoke detectors, and your carbon monoxide detectors, that's it for me.
Thank you, chief. Chief Kaluzny?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council, the first item I have for you is a department handgun upgrade, uh, what this is, we're, we're looking to add to, um, the firearms that we have, and we're, uh, looking to purchase two compact versions of, of our current, uh, handgun that we carry, so right now, we, we carry a Glock, and we're looking to buy the, the smaller version of this. This is used primarily in an administrative setting between either myself as the chief or our detective, because as you're in administration, as you're in plain clothes, trying to carry around a, a full-size weapon just isn't conducive, and with our detective going out, uh, to multiple things, maybe working in a plain clothes, you need something that you can easily conceal. So what I'm looking to do is purchase these two firearms, but be able to use firearms that we currently have to sell and trade, so we currently have one firearm that, that made its way back to the city after a pretty interesting history, that was purchased in nineteen eighty-nine, we also have four other firearms that were taken into the police department as evidence, and their forfeitures that we can go ahead and sell, so I'm looking to use the, the proceeds from the firearms that we have, sell these firearms, and also use a little bit of money from our drug forfeiture account to fund the purchase of these two firearms with the optics, so there'll be no cost to the residents, it's all, you know, proceeds from, uh, police department goods that we have. So I'd be, uh, looking to request a motion to sell the following firearms, and there's four listed here with the, so, uh, serial numbers, uh, to, uh, Five Star Pond for a total of twelve hundred and fifty dollars, they were the highest bidder for the, uh, four firearms.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Deanne, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
And final motion here is to request a motion to purchase two Glock Forty-three X MOS, two Holosun HE five oh seven K dash J GR dash X two sights, and two adapter plates from CMP for a total amount of one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents, and, and these purchases from CMP are a known vendor that we deal with, and they are state law enforcement fixed pricing and stuff on the purchase.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Sikora, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. And I believe you have another item, chief?
Uh, yes, I do, the, uh, the next item I have is for a state grant, the, uh, mayor kinda led into what this is about, and this is for the mobile vehicle barrier system, and this is a grant that we received from Nate Shannon, as he was, uh, on his, on his way out, he, he submitted it through the legislature, and, and we were awarded two hundred thousand dollars from the state of Michigan to purchase this mobile vehicle barrier system, and this is a no-match cost grant, so there's gonna be no cost to the residents and no cost to the city to purchase these items, and, and as the mayor alluded to, we do have two vendors coming to the Lucky Leprechaun, so please, when you're down here, come, come see me, I'll introduce you to the, the vendors and, and take a look and, and see what they are, cause I'm hoping to, uh, afterwards, be able to make a decision, so I'd be looking for, requesting a motion to accept the state grant and its Utica Police Twenty-Five, and allow the mayor to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Sikora?
Support.
Support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
And my next motion is I'd request a motion to amend the fiscal year Twenty-Five Police Budget Revenue Account Other State Grants by two hundred thousand dollars, and the expenditure account equipment purchase by two hundred thousand dollars.
Move forward.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
And my next motion is I'd request a motion to amend the fiscal year Twenty-Five Police Budget Revenue Account Other State Grants by two hundred thousand dollars, and the expenditure account equipment purchase by two hundred thousand dollars.
Move forward.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, chief?
Um, just, uh, real quick update on, on police staffing levels, just this afternoon, I, I met with a, uh, uh, young individual, he's at the police academy right now, um, and we gave him a conditional offer of employment, so he, uh, comes to us, um, with a little college background, played some baseball, is, knows one of our, uh, current members right now, and currently sitting in the police academy, and so looking forward to getting him through the process, graduating, and, and bringing him onto the city, so he's local person, lives, lives within the, uh, vicinity, so he's well-aware of, of Utica and really looking forward to what we have here at our department, so looking forward to bringing him on.
That's great, when will he graduate?
He graduates on May twelfth.
Yay.
So, yep, so I told him, May thirteenth, get ready for work, so.
Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Superintendent Diamond?
Good evening, mayor and council, um, we have a couple, uh, items in, uh, before you tonight, the first one is, uh, budget amendments for the Parks Department, uh, the first one is for seasonal employees, I, I budgeted for seasonal employees in, um, water and sewer, and also street funds, uh, but I did have them do a little work in parks, so I'm just need to transfer money from the Streets Department into the Parks Department to cover those funds, um, for what they had done, so the, and the other one is, uh, medical stipend, uh, was a line item that was not budgeted for in the Parks Department because we did not have anybody receiving that, with the addition of our new hiry, uh, Eric Dix, he's not taking the medical insurance, so in lieu of the medical insurance, he recer, receives a medical stipend. Um, so my first motion for council is to approve the fiscal year Twenty-Five Budget Amendment for Parks Department Seasonal Employees One Oh One Seven Five One Seven Zero Seven Zero Zero Zero, in the amount of five hundred dollars, with real, reallocation amount of five hundred dollars from the Street Department Seasonal Employees One Oh One Four Four One Seven Zero Seven Zero Zero Zero.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi?
Support.
Support by O'Donnell, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, uh, second motion is for city council to approve fiscal year Twenty-Five Budget, um, Amendment for Parks Department Medical Stipend, One Oh One Seven Five One Seven One Six Zero Zero One, in the amount of four hundred dollars, which is just one payment, that'll be on, um, fiscal year Twenty-Five, the rest will be budgeted for for fiscal year Twenty-Six, um, from the general fund.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi?
Support.
Support by Sikora, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is for fiscal year budget amendments for the Street Department. The first one is for engineering fees from the redesign for Van Dyke Medium, which was already approved. Now we're just moving the funds to make sure that account is a whole. And the second one is for the medical stipend for Joe Lang, which was missed during budget preparation. So now, he also receives the stipend in lieu of the city's insurance, and that is already for fiscal year 26 handled, or a line item. So my first motion for City Council to approve the fiscal year 25 budget amendment for the Street Department 101-441-904000 MF-AUTI engineering in an amount of $7,400 from the general fund.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Sikora. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sorry. Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And the second motion is for City Council to approve the fiscal year 25 budget amendment for the Street Department 101-441-716001 medical stipend, which will be four payments for Joe Lang in the amount of $1,200 from the general fund.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi?
Support.
Support by Sikora. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, Chief?
Just a real quick update on police staffing levels. Just this afternoon, I met with a young individual. He's at the police academy right now, and we gave him a conditional offer of employment. So he comes to us with a little college background, played some baseball, knows one of our current members right now, and currently sitting in the police academy, and so looking forward to get him through the process, graduating, and bringing him onto the city. So he's a local person, lives within the vicinity, so he's well aware of Utica and really looking forward to what we have here at our department. So looking forward to bringing him on.
That's great. When will he graduate?
He graduates on May 12th.
Yay.
So, yep, so I told him, "May 13th, get ready for work." So.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Superintendent Diamond?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple items before you tonight. The first one is budget amendments for the Parks Department. The first one is for seasonal employees. I budgeted for seasonal employees in water and sewer, and also street funds, but I did have them do a little work in parks, so I just need to transfer money from the Streets Department into the Parks Department to cover those funds for what they had done. So, and the other one is medical stipend was a line item that was not budgeted for in the Parks Department, because we did not have anybody receiving that with the addition of our new hiry, Eric Dix. He's not taking the medical insurance, so in lieu of the medical insurance, he receives a medical stipend. So my first motion for council is to approve the fiscal year 25 budget amendment for Parks Department seasonal employees 101-751-707000, in the amount of $500, with real reallocation amount of $500 from the Street Department seasonal employees 101-441-707000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion?
No, what makes me happy, seriously, is when I was reading this, it's like, "Oh, no budget amendment is required." So yay.
And this should get us through the end of the budget as well, so.
Okay, good.
So, yes, because this will come close to, you know, there will be funds left over in that GL item, but this, according to our, you know, our water operator, that this should cover us till that point, so.
Perfect.
It's a great deal, and, you know, I'm glad that Kim had a conversation with her daughters, and Neptune came up, and I thank Lori and Becky for helping out with this, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Just a couple items. I know I'm usually lengthy. He's laughing. We will have Auburn and Cass swept, looking nice for the Lucky Leprechaun race. Pioneer Park, there, the completion date is April 15th, so we should see everything poured in the pavilion up by then. That'll give us roughly 10 days to get the picnic tables built and over there at the, under the pavilion for the Puppy Parade. So that is nice. Working on an IRA grant through the DNR, and that is a migrant, and that helps with tree plantings, tree removals, equipment. The deadline is this Friday, so I'm working with it. The mayor sent some information, got me in contact with the right people, sent everything going, so everything should be looking pretty good. It is no match, and it's from $5,000 to $105,000 of grant money, so cross our fingers.
So we're paying for $104,999,000?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what I like to hear.
So we looked into adding trees to Pioneer Park with the pavilion. We have quite a few trees that are dying in Grant Park that we're looking to replace. There's some that are just stumps that we're looking to replace. Heritage Park, we have a couple dead trees that need to be removed around the dock. So the idea for this, making it green, that if you remove one, you have to plant two, so we shouldn't have an issue with that. We do have the space, especially Pioneer Park and Grant Park. Looking to add a couple more trees along the fence line across from that IT building right there, kind of give it a little privacy. So we're crossing our fingers, and they can, and they will give $5,000 upfront for equipment costs, so that's a great thing, because we could use safety equipment for our tree trimming, new saws, arboris saws, stuff to help us out, pruning, hedge trimmers, and all those fall under that, so. The lead service line replacements begin tomorrow, March 12th, so we are, we have the first nine that have been contacting, and it'll be Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays for the next couple weeks. In May, stretch out Monday through Friday, depending on DeAngelo Brothers' scheduling. And Mayor Mike McDonald from HRC wanted to thank you very much for posting that at Facebook, because we've gotten a lot of feedback. You know, people are starting to call more and more, and especially, we're going to get more since they're going to see the trucks out on their streets, so it will help with mobilization if they're doing one house, a neighbor comes out and said, "Okay, I'm ready to go." We can, you know, get those done, so that's all good news. The Ironbell Trail Bridge project, the mayor and I, and the treasurer, we're working on. We did get numbers back from HRC for engineering costs and construction costs. The next step right now is the treasurer needs to contact the state and the feds for the grant, because the one, I believe it's the state will pay for engineering costs, so we have to make sure that that money gets.
With no match.
Yeah, no match, right. This is no match. But the feds won't let us use money for engineering costs. The state grant would, so trying to cover everything for engineering costs, and then everything else will go into construction, so we are working on that, so that's great. During the Puppy Parade, we are going to be putting in the Sterling, well, we'll have it in, but there's a plaque for Sterling, the dog, so we're going to put a little cement pad in there, and the mayor had already ordered the plaque, and we were in presence of that. DTE is doing a, starting community lighting projects that I started in conversation with them. They're going to look for, at our ornamental traffic lights, which are the black ones. They're going to do an assessment of our lighting, the cost of those lightings, and how much, if it would be beneficial if we put those straight to the grid instead of them charging us monthly. That means they would be charged of these lights, replacing them if they get knocked down, if they need to be repaired, if sandblasted, powder coated. I don't know how quick they'll be, but this would be something that they would look into. They originally wanted, they were charging $500 to get it started, and I was going to bring it to council today, but because we are one of the first cities that actually reached out, starting to talk to them, they're waiving that fee. So once I get the grid of where our boxes are for each lights, they're going to be starting that project, and then I will have that for you next council meeting. Obviously, maybe next council, the one after that. Obviously, the fee for that will probably be a larger first-time installment for whatever needs to be done, and then after that, we're hoping to save money on our lighting costs, so we'll take a look at that.
What is the name of that company?
DTE.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, it's straight from DTE.
Okay.
Other than that, we have, we had new water testing that needed to be done for PFOS, which is another EPA Eagle compliance thing. Plastics in the water, obviously, I'm not sure if you, if you're not sure about it, you can Google it. Eagle is going heavy on this compliance. That had to be done either yesterday, today, or tomorrow. We got it done today, got it sent in, so that's taken care of. We updated the emergency response plan, and we have our bid out for our point inspections on mitten, so I should have, we have the opening, you got my email, City Clerk? We'll have the opening on that on March 31st, and I'll have that for you for next council meeting. Other than that, cross connection, annual service line report, annual pumpage report, all due at the end of this month to Eagle, so. That's it, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Next is Mr. Paternoster. We'll give him a minute to get up here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you a resolution that would fulfill a commitment that the council made back in November of 2023, when the council adopted the governmental fund balance reserve policy. This policy calls for setting a unassigned fund balance of 40% of annual operating expenditures, and when that fund balance exceeds the 40%, to transfer the excess funds into a committed fund balance for capital improvements. We didn't do it last year, so after some cajoling from the mayor, I finally got the review done, and I am recommending to council a transfer of $1,500,000 from general fund unassigned fund balance to the committed fund balance for capital improvements. That would still leave in the general fund's unassigned fund balance 40% of the fiscal year 2025's original budget operating expenditures would leave $2,599,000 in the fund balance. So I am requesting that council approve this resolution that was in the packet.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. I'll kick off discussion. This is truly a historic moment in my eyes. It's something that I think we should all be very proud of. Utica, you know, established in 1817, and we've never had, you know, what in layman's terms, a rainy day fund, or in, you know, accountant terms, a capital improvements fund. The important thing is, this is a committed fund, so it's not money that can be squandered, it's not money that can just be easily moved, it's got to be voted, and I think by resolution, taken from that capital improvement fund. So it's really setting us up for future successes, you know, way longer than I certainly will be here, and probably most of us, but it's really the beginning of financial security for the city. So I'm proud for everyone that's contributed to this, you know, going all the way back to November 13th, 2023. For those of you who remember former Councilman Perry Sylvester, when I knew this was going to be on the agenda, I called him, and I said, "Perry, I've got good news. We are finally putting money in our capital improvement fund." And he was ecstatic. He's like, "I'm going to be watching cable tonight, because I want to see that."
I appreciate it.
So I didn't want this to get lost in the rest of the agenda as just another item. This truly is a historical time, a historical moment, and something that all of us, especially Phil, for all the hard work, we should be proud of this. Any further discussion from council?
I can remember going way, way back where the city of Utica basically had maybe $200, $250,000 of total reserve, not a capital improvement. We still have money on top of it, so it is. It's a very proud moment of what has happened over the last 30-plus years, so.
Yes.
Great work, Mr. Mayor. Council, your leadership has made some smart moves in the past handful of years, from reducing expenditures like senior housing, things that didn't make sense for the city. Now we're using common sense, and you're doing an accurate job.
Well, all of us are. It's a team effort.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Perry, for bringing it up in the first place. That's right. I'm excited.
And I do have to mention, this is really only half of the effort, though, so I don't want us to get too happy about ourselves and slapping ourselves on the back, because really, the hard part is ahead of us. To really operate in the proper way, now what we need is the other piece, a capital improvement plan, where we inventory all our city assets, when we know, you know, Chief Kaluzny's sidearms are, need to go out of service because they've depreciated, when, you know, Superintendent Diamond knows that there's a pickup truck that's only got five more years of life. We need a plan now. Now we're starting to fund that plan, but we need the other half. We need to start working on a capital improvement plan so that we know what assets the city owns, when their service life is going to be up, and plan for that, and know, expect those expenses as they come up. So, yeah, I'm ecstatic, so happy that this has happened, but now we got to get right back to work and get the second half going, so. Thank you, everybody. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk? A roll call vote to adopt the resolution to direct the finance director to transfer 1.5 million from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the committed fund balance for capital improvements.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks again, everybody. Momentous moment.
Seriously, what a great time for our city.
Anything else to report tonight, Mr. Paternoster?
I would just like to remind the public that the 2024 tax season ended February 28th, so if you did not pay your property taxes, you will need to contact the McComb County Treasurer's Office to get a payoff amount, because it will be taxed plus interest in a late payment charge. With that, thank you.
Thank you.